Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good audio quality for council members and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat, and directions to do so are in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address, as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time at the public portion. Again, insert your name and your address, and whether you want to speak for or against an agenda item, you will then be given five minutes to speak. Be sure to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order of Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting will be legally held by way of a virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams application. At this time, I would give the invocation as everyone to please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you this day, but this is the day that you have made, and we shall rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for all things. We thank you for our health, our strength, and also the opportunity to serve this great city. Guide and lead us so that we will make the right decisions for all of our citizens. We ask for your guidance and your direction in regards to what we're seeing in terms of our community, the violence and the use of guns. We ask that you give us what to do, how to do it, so that we can bring a sense of direction and that we can save those that are in need of being saved in terms of the gun violence. All these blessings, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Jones, will you please call the roll?
President White.
Yes.
If I may interrupt. Now that we're back in the chambers, would it be appropriate to do the pledge as on in our agenda?
I wondered that, too. Yeah, I was worried about that with the other council members not being present with us, but I tell you what, let's go ahead and do the pledge since the majority of us are here, and thank you, Councilmember Warner, for that suggestion. And other council members there at home, we ask that you join us as well.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And to our listening audience and those who have joined us by Teams, we are so excited that a majority of the council members are meeting in person. We ask that you bear with us in terms of any technical challenges that we might have as we continue to move forward. At this time, I will ask Clerk Jones to please call the roll.
Before I call the roll, I just want to make sure everybody turns their phone off as we have an echo. Okay, Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Wax.
Present.
Councilmember Nisgaski.
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President McBride.
Present.
President White.
Present.
Not our present.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jones, will you, at this time, read the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
Yes. Report of Subcommittee on Minutes to the South Bend Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the March 8, 2021, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Is there a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been accepted. We have two items under special business, the first of which is a special resolution 21-18. Clerk Jones, will you please read the special resolution? Portion, please.
Yes. "A special resolution of the South Bend Common Council honoring the South Bend Riley Boys High School Wildcats basketball team for its success in the 2020-2021 basketball season."
Thank you. I do know that Councilwoman Sharon McBride, the third district representative, is the presenter. Are there any other members, Councilwoman McBride, that will be part of the presentation? If so, we do ask that prior to them giving their comments, we do ask that they give their name and address for the record.
Thank you so much. I would like to introduce and say hello to the Riley High School Boys Basketball Team. Hi. I see them in on the Teams chat, and I believe that Principal Henderson and some others may be here as well, and I will give them an opportunity to speak after we read the resolution. Special Resolution 21-18 of the South Bend Common Council honoring the South Bend Riley Boys High School Wildcats basketball team for its success in the 2021 basketball season, whereas each 2021 athletic season at every level has been described as a season like no other due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the 2021 basketball season is memorable for the South Bend Riley Boys High School Riley Wildcats basketball team for much better reasons, a successful season and an exciting playoff run. And whereas the 2021 South Bend Riley Boys Basketball Team consists of the following individuals: seniors Blake Wesley, Doug Adams, Philip Robles, Clay Coleman, Nate Mack, Tyson Lee, Davion Anderson, Jackson Copley; and juniors Jamal Robert, Damarian Span, Isaiah Robinson, Azion Williams, James Boyd. And the team is led by head coach Alex Daniel, assistant coaches Gage Ott, Jonathan Zamerson, Powell Hartman, and school administrator Sean Henderson, and also CB Gavin, Athletic Director Representative. I would like to welcome them. And whereas the team finished the season with a 19-7 overall record, and amongst those 19 wins were the Class IV A sectional championship over number four South Bend Adams, and a regional semifinal victory over Valparaiso, and whereas there is no doubt that next year's team will continue in its footsteps of the 2021 team and build on that rock-solid foundation. Now, therefore, be it publicly and proudly resolved as follows. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of South Bend and the South Bend Common Council, we are proud to publicly recognize and congratulate the South Bend Riley Boys High School Riley Wildcats basketball team for its outstanding season and exciting playoff run during its Class IV A season. Section two, we wish to honor each and every one of these young men as a great athletes they are, and we are wishing them all continued success in the remainder of their educational years, be it at a high school or college level, both on and off the court and in their future careers, where they will continue to do great things throughout their entire lives, motivated by the experiences and success that they have had this season. Signed and approved this 12th day of April, 2021, the City of South Bend, County of St. Joseph, and the State of Indiana. I want to say congratulations to Riley High School, and at this time, I would like to turn it over to Coach Alex and see if there are any comments from the team and from any of the staff administrators at this time.
Hey, Ms. Wesley. How's it going, everybody? I'm Coach Dana. I had the pleasure of coaching these guys this year. It was a great group, like you mentioned. We had to overcome a lot of stuff. These guys handled it very well. Had a lot of adversity throughout the season. We were able to make a special run at the end of the year, and really proud of these guys, like you said, not only for what they've done on the court, but what they're continuing to do off the court. We had eight seniors this year, and they're all going to go on and do great things. And I think one of the things as a coach that I pride myself is I'm not going to know how well I did with these guys until 10 years down the road, seeing these guys in the workforce, with families, wives, those kinds of things, and looking forward to seeing their journey and continuing to follow them and all the great things that they do. So thank you, guys, for allowing us to be on air, and appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Coach. I really appreciate it and all of the hard work that you have done to groom those young men to be great men. And we always hear the negative in our community, but it's great to celebrate the great things that are happening in our public school system and in our city as a whole. So I say congratulations to all of you, and at this time, I will turn it over to my fellow council before I turn it back over to, no, you know what, I would yield. I see Principal Henderson on the line and some of the staff administrators. So, Principal Henderson, you have any comments?
Please state your name and address.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Sean Henderson, 1902 Fellow Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46613.
Thank you so much. Do you have any words you would like to say to these young men?
I'm just extremely proud of them. You know, just have the ability to watch them grow and work from their freshman year to where they are today, especially to our seniors, for our underclassmen that have came in and just, you know, continue to work hard and grind. I couldn't be more proud as a principal. They make me better every day. I hope that I make them better, but just to continue to watch them grow into the young men that they are becoming is just beyond words. I'm just extremely proud of the work that they put in.
Thank you so much. I see school board member Leslie Wesley.
Hi, and welcome. Thank you, Councilwoman Sharon McBride, and to all the council members, thank you. I'd just like to say, on behalf of, in the absence of John Anella, our school board president, a very special thank you for recognizing our Riley High School basketball players. Again, we are so very, very proud of our Riley basketball players and all of our students and all of our athletes in South Bend schools. We'd just like to thank the council for recognizing our students throughout the year, and a special thank you to you, Councilwoman Sharon McBride, for the beautiful resolution. So again, in the absence of our president, Mr. John Anella, and the South Bend School Board, I'm Leslie Wesley, Vice President, and I forgot to give my address, I'm sorry. 215 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you so much. Clerk Jones, do you see any other hands raised or recognition?
I'm looking right now. I don't see any. I'm not seeing anyone.
Thank you. At this time, I'll yield to my fellow colleagues to see if there's any comments that you would like to give to these young men.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. Prior to asking the council members for any comments, I want to make sure that we go to the public hearing portion, and just to make the statement, are there anyone from the public wishing to speak in support of this resolution? Clerk Jones?
I don't see anyone, and I'm not sure I'm seeing all my, all the participants, but right now from my computer, I don't see any participants wishing to express interest. I'm not sure. You see any in the chat? I can't get to any.
Is there anyone present, since we can't get to the chat, that can hear my voice wishing to speak in opposition?
Better not be anyone speaking in opposition.
I don't see anyone, so the public hearing portion is closed. I will now go to the council members and ask you for your comments, and I'm going to start with First District Representative, Councilmember Henry Davis, and go directly down the row.
Second District.
Second District.
What an awesome feat that we have been able to witness with your team, with the Riley Wildcats this year. I congratulate you on your efforts throughout the season. I watched considerably. Principal Henderson, the coaching staff, everyone included, the players, good job. Looking forward to seeing more great things come out of your life as you move into other areas of your life, meaning college. Some of you may be going to college, some of you may not, but I'm looking forward to it. I think you've already set a pace for yourself with the way that you carry the banner for South Bend as you left here in South, left out of the city after you won a sectional title and kept going. I'm going to say something to the principal. You guys are doing an awesome job with your students over there, and we celebrate you more and more every time we hear the great things, and I think it's up to us to continue to do what Sharon has said. We have to celebrate the great things. And so I say to all of you, basketball-related or non-basketball-related, thank you, great job, and carry on.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. We'll now move to Fifth District Councilman, Representative Eli Wax.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate all of you on your success in an exceptionally difficult year and wish you success in everything that you do going forward, whether it be athletics or academics or your careers. When you succeed in hard times, that gives you the skills and experience to succeed in whatever you do, and I wish you all the best success in that.
Thank you. Councilman Kenneth Lee, First District Representative.
To Mr. Henderson and all of the coaching staff and the students, you know, we've been in Riley a lot, and you can just feel the love and direction that they're receiving over at Riley. And I know, Mr. Henderson, you're a very big part of that, and the impact that you're making on these boys' lives is, will last a lifetime. So I want to celebrate these young men and to let them know that don't just settle for basketball and the high of what you have achieved. Keep going. There's greater heights. There's greater achievements you can make, and we are looking forward, as a city, to seeing you, young men, to continue to transform the lives of individuals you come in contact with and to come back and to make an impact in our city. So we celebrate you. South Bend is on your shoulders, and we appreciate you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Nisgaski, Sixth District Representative.
Thank you, President White. There's not a whole lot more I can say than what the, my council members before me said. In other words, congratulating you all on a wonderful year, wishing success to your seniors as you go forth in the world, whether it is through college or whatever the choice is, if you're going on to pursue a career in some other way. But we do look forward to having you all back in our community and being the leaders of tomorrow for us because we've already shown that you're leaders now. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lori Hammond, at-large representative.
I just want to let you know that we are so very proud of you, the sacrifices that you have made to accomplish these things. I also want to mention your parents. Being a mom, I know that when your kids want to do something and they have a calling to do something, you just have to give them what they need, and I know your parents have put forth a lot, so I hope that you thank them. We very much thank them, and we look forward to the great things to come with all of you. So congratulations.
Thank you. Councilman Troya Warner, Fourth District Representative.
Thank you, President White. I congratulate you, and I've got a daughter who's a college athlete. I know the commitment and the drive and the dedication that it takes to be successful both at the high school level and the college level. I encourage you to take that drive and that commitment and apply it in everything you do in life, and kind of echo what Councilmember Hammond said. You know, I also congratulate and thank your support systems. I know they, your parents and your families have also helped you get there. You didn't get there alone. Nobody in life does, so we congratulate them and recognize them also, and we can't wait to see what great things you all will do next. Thank you.
We'll now move to Councilwoman Rachel Thomas Morgan, at-large Councilwoman Representative.
Thank you. I just want to add my congratulations to my council colleagues and congratulate you, Coach, and the Wildcats' men's players for a successful season and successful academic year. We are so proud of you. What you have demonstrated in this historic, extraordinary year is strength, courage, hard work, and resilience, all the skills necessary to have a successful future ahead of you. So seniors, especially, Godspeed to you. We look forward to the ways that you are going to impact and make a difference in our world.
Thank you. I would like to add my words of congratulations. It's something about being the last one, that a lot of your comments that you would have made have already been made, and so I just want to add my words of congratulations to not only the excellent Wildcats, but also to your principal, your counselors, everyone that's had opportunity to pour into you. And as you continue on your journey, I want you to always remember that you may not know the young men that you have touched that are looking up to you. So keep that in mind as you continue, that someone is watching and you have encouraged them, and I will put money on this if I was a betting woman, that they will come back and tell you that they have looked up to you. So keep up the good work. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion. Let's, Councilwoman McBride, you have any other comments?
I would just like to say that, you know, I coached at Riley for 17 years, the high school girls' basketball team, and also was there when Principal Henderson was playing there. So, so proud of him and his leadership and what he is doing to these young men and pouring into their lives. And a shout out to Tyson Lee, senior on the boys' basketball team. He's my little cousin. So just want to say congratulations again. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. Councilmember, I would like to entertain a motion to accept.
I'd like to. Can we do by full acclamation because we changed?
Yes, you sure can.
Okay, great. I would like to make a motion to accept this by full acclamation and with also the understanding that we, there's nothing better than basketball. This is Indiana. This is basketball country. We have to love it, man. But by full acclamation.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Girl call, Clerk Jones?
Yes. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Councilmember Nisgaski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
A definite aye.
Vice President McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
President White.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you so much. Our next special business is Special Resolution 21-19. Clerk Jones, will you please read the introduction to this resolution?
21-19, "A special resolution of the South Bend Common Council honoring Riley High School athlete Michael Burns for his many athletic achievements."
Thank you so much, and I do believe that Councilwoman McBride is the presenter for this special resolution as well. Councilwoman McBride.
Thank you. I was informed by Coach Vander, Vandreese, wait, no, Vander, Vanderrech, that, yeah, Coach Vandreese, that he cannot attend tonight, nor can Michael Burns, as he is playing varsity baseball tonight and has a game. So Principal Henderson is on the call that will make comments on his behalf after the reading of the resolution. "A special resolution of the South Bend Common Council honoring Riley High School athlete Michael Burns for his many athletic achievements, whereas few high school athletes can claim to be a four-year varsity letterman, and whereas even fewer high school athletes can claim to be a four-time state qualifier, and whereas even fewer high school athletes excel in such diverse sports as swimming, cross-country, baseball, and many golf, and whereas even fewer high school athletes have the perseverance to continue to excel during the existence of a worldwide pandemic which curtailed many athletic seasons, and whereas Michael Burns of South Bend Riley High School is one of those athletes, and whereas Michael's talents earned him the South Bend Tribune's Athlete of the Month while still a high school junior, and whereas cross-country and swimming are somewhat unique in that each is both a team sport and an individual sport, and whereas Michael saved his best swimming for the 2021 IHSA, IHSAA State Swimming Finals, where he scored 18 points for his Riley High School team, and whereas on the individual side, Michael swam to a personal best in the 100-yard breaststroke while also completing the 200 individual medley. Now, therefore, be it publicly and proudly resolved as follows. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of South Bend and the South Bend Common Council, we are proud to publicly recognize and congratulate Michael Burns on being an outstanding athlete while representing South Bend Riley High School. We wish Michael the best in his future endeavors. Section three, wherever Michael's immediate future takes him, we hope he finds his way to a permanent home in South Bend where he can use his talents for the well-being of the city. Signed and approved this 12th day of April, 2021, the City of South Bend, the County of St. Joseph, the State of Indiana." At this time, I would turn it over to Principal Henderson.
Thank you. So on behalf of Coach John Vandreese and Michael Burns, we just want to say thank you so much for recognizing Michael. At the end of Michael's senior year, Michael will have 12 varsity letters from baseball, swimming, and cross-country. Michael got 13th in the 200 IM at state this year, and it was such a blessing because I got to see Mrs. Wesley be at, trying to be at two different events, at swimming and at girls' basketball. So that was tough, but again, we appreciate it. In the 100 breaststroke, Michael got fifth. Michael also broke a school record that was held for over 30 years. So we're just so proud of this young man, and, you know, just for him to represent Riley and to be a true Southsider, it really means a lot. And again, he's hurt that he couldn't be here tonight, but they're playing baseball against Penn, so he's very much needed in that game.
Wow. Well, thank you so much, and we're so proud of you and Coach as well, and proud of Riley High School. And at this time, again, I would turn it over to any other staff administrators if they would like to make a comment at this time.
Hi, Councilwoman Leslie, I mean, Councilwoman Sharon McBride, can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Again, Leslie Wesley, 215 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in South Bend, Indiana, 46601. Again, on behalf, in the absence of our president of the school board trustees, John Anella, I'm Leslie Wesley, Vice President of the School Board Trustees of South Bend Community School Corporation. Again, we are extremely grateful for our outstanding student athletes, and Mr. Michael Burns is one of many. I did have the pleasure, as Mr. Henderson said, I was going in between the, being at the state tournament with our Washington High School team, and also Mr. Burns was across not too far away on the campus of Indiana University-Purdue and competing for the state. So again, it was a joyous occasion to be down in Indianapolis and have both teams and Mr. Burns representing Riley High School and placing, his placement at the state, at state level. Mr. Burns is an outstanding athlete on and, on and out of the pool, and so we are extremely grateful to, again, to Mr. Henderson and his wonderful staff and the coaching staff, Mr. Vandreese at Riley High School, and hats off again to Mr. Burns. And again, thank you to the council. Special thank you to Councilwoman Sharon McBride for the resolution. We do appreciate it much. Thank you.
Thank you.
President White, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McBride. I'll turn it over to, before we go into the public hearing portion, we'll go directly to that, then I'll come back to the council members for comments. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of this resolution?
I don't see anyone waiting to speak in support of this resolution.
Is there anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
I don't see anyone waiting to speak in opposition of this resolution.
The public hearing portion is now closed. I'll go to council members, and I start with Councilwoman Rachel Thomas Morgan. with Councilwoman Rachel Thomas-Morgan, and go directly to Councilman Troy Warner.
Thank you, President White. I'll just start off the echo of congratulations that I know are coming. Congratulations, Mr. Burns, to the coach, to the principal, for an incredible season in the pool and in the classroom, and Godspeed to you.
Thank you. Councilman Troy Warner?
Thank you. These resolutions are exciting. You know, we have to be champions of our, of our kids, of our youth, of our city schools, and get up on the rooftops and shout their accomplishments. I commend the principal and the school and the teachers for everything that we're doing, and let's continue to do this and put a hard sell on our schools and all the great things that are happening. And the media likes to hop up the negative, but there's great things happening every single day in our schools. We just need to be shouting that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
Yes, I'd like to add my congratulations. Again, it takes a village to support someone like Mr. Burns. Obviously, he is a very busy young man, I would imagine. And so it takes a whole system of support to keep him successful. And I want to thank everyone that has been there for this young man. And I look forward, again, of hearing the great things that he will accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Nizgatsky?
Thank you, President White. Yeah, Riley High School has a lot going on there these days. A lot of young men and women come, going to be graduating on that school and make South Bend very pride, I'm sorry, very proud. But Michael Burns, that's, that's a lot of accomplishments for him. Swimming, cross-country, he's going to have 12 letters by the time he graduates. Very, very impressive, and I'm looking very forward to see what that young man does and with his future. So congrats to him and congratulations to Riley High School.
Thank you. Councilman Kenneth Lee?
Yes, I just would like to say that again, you know, we go into different schools in my outside job, and there is such a spirit of pride and such a spirit of family at Riley. And again, Principal Henderson, we thank you for being strong leadership in the eyes of these young people and helping to sculpt and mold them into extraordinary young people. So from the basketball team to Michael Burns, you know, these are the stories that the news needs to carry. These are the things that needs to be broadcast about the tremendous accomplishments that these young people have made. To have 12 letters by the time you, you're a senior, that's, that's a very hard feat to do. And so, again, as my other council colleagues have said, I'm excited to see, I'm excited about our future. I'm excited about what these young people represent, and they are definitely not the norm. And so we want to celebrate that. And I just pray that these young people will continue to go on to be great and do great things with their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Eli Wax?
Thank you, President White. There's not much that I could add to my colleagues. I just want to congratulate Mr. Burns and his success until now, and wish him all the best, and may he go from success to success in everything that he does.
Thank you. Councilman Henry Davis, Jr.?
Yeah, I want to echo the same, echo what my colleague just said to my left, Mr. Wax. We look forward to a successful life from Michael Burns. I think that he's proven himself to be very resilient and successful in what he does. But I also wanted to, someone else said something earlier about what's happening at Riley, and you're right, because we had Kevin here at one point in time, Kevin Liddell, right? And so he's, is going to be a grab, obviously, Michael Burns. But then we also have Washington High School Girls Basketball Team, and then I even thought about St. Joe also. So, I mean, I'm excited for South Bend. And I'm excited for these young people and their families as well. So great job, great job, great job, Mr. Burns, and a great job, Mr. Henderson, and coaches over there, parents as well. But good job, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. You're correct. Great things are happening within our schools and for the city of South Bend. I've had the great pleasure of working with a sisterhood group in Roddy High School for the last four and now going on five years, and they are my heartbeats. And I have totally missed not being able to continue the engagement with them. And Mr. Burns, we wish you the very best. And I need to ask this question. Does Mr. Henderson, does Mr. Burns have a sister? Is she a swimmer?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm so proud to say that she is a member of our Youth Advisory Council as well. And she's doing a tremendous job. And unfortunately, we had to stop meeting in person because of COVID, but rest assured, we will start up meeting once again, once the new school year begins. But she has been a tremendous member for our youth council as well. So the Burns family, they are connected not only with Roddy High School, but also with the South Bend Common Council. Thank you so much, and congratulations again to Mr. Burns. Now I'd like to entertain a motion.
I would like to entertain a motion that the council passes this resolution favorably.
Second.
Can we have a motion? It's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you so much. I will now entertain a motion to resolve from the, to the committee of the whole, as we do not have any reports from city offices.
So move.
So move.
And it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Point of order. The agenda number six shows that Pam is presenting, she's.
No, there won't be any update from city offices. Although it's on the agenda, but that will not be the case for this meeting. But thank you.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. The first bill is Bill 7421. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 7421 a second reading?
7421, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 600 North Niles Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Four in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report? Committee report, ZNA?
Yes, this came before the zoning and annexation committee this afternoon, and it left with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? And if you are, I ask that you state your name and address for the record and give us the key points of the bill.
Yes, thank you, Council. Joe Molnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. Today, we're discussing rezoning from NC to U1, which is from mixed-use district to a primarily single-family district. This property is located along Crescent Avenue and Niles Avenue, just north of the East Bank neighborhood, spanning out here a little bit. As you can see, the large parcel is all zoned, NC Neighborhood Center. The petitioner wishes to rezone just this sliver off Crescent Avenue for the purposes of rezoning it to U1, urban neighborhood lawn, to make it in line with the single-family district that the new property owner, who is going to be purchasing it, would use it as. As we discussed in committee, while a downzoning from a mixed-use district to a primarily single-family district is not preferred, in this case, it should not inhibit any future development in the neighborhood. Niles Avenue is the commercial corridor for this neighborhood, and all the frontage along Niles is still available if Beacon would want to do something more intense than the parking lot currently. The property that is being rezoned has no frontage along Niles and is a very small portion of the larger parcel, which serves as the commercial corridor. Expanding to U1 along Crescent should not provide any hardships to any neighboring properties, also not limiting any future development along Niles Avenue. And finally, as you can see here, this is the property being rezoned. It is a very, has a very steep incline, which would also prohibit any future commercial activity there anyway. So the staff did not see any major, major impediments to this rezoning. We would like to see, though, however, if you, if the council does see to pass this, pass this bill to make it subject to a subdivision taking place so that the new rezoned U1 district will be subdivided off the current parcel. Can I answer any questions that you might have? And I believe Mike Danch is here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Okay, I don't see any questions. At this time, we are going to go to, was there any questions up there?
I think you have a presentation from Mr. Mike Danch.
Is there a presentation?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you.
No problem. Mike Danch from Danch Harnett Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend, representing Beacon Health and also the contingent purchaser. As Joe had mentioned, what we're asking council to do is to take a small portion of the Beacon property, which is located on the upper portion of their site. If you're familiar with this particular location, Beacon has an existing parking lot that accesses on to Niles Avenue. The portion of the property that we're asking to rezone is at the top of the hill. There's almost a 12 to 15-foot elevation difference between what we're asking to rezone and where the existing parking lot is. The existing wooded area will remain, which will allow for the buffer from the Beacon parking lot to those single-family homes that are along Hill Street. But the intent is, is to rezone this property so that Kevin Feuda, the property owner to the east, can actually enlarge his two lots that he has that front on to Crescent Avenue. As Joe had mentioned, what we will do is that assuming the council would approve this rezoning, we will go through a subdivision process and enlarge Mr. Feuda's two lots that he has on Crescent Avenue to make them larger legal lots of record. And then we will also make a lot for the parking lot for the Beacon Health Systems property as well. The ordinance requires that there'll still be a buffer zone for the parking lot for Beacon Health from that residential area. That will be maintained. That's not being encroached into. So we will meet all the zoning codes that are required. And if council has any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. So at this time, is there any questions from the council?
Comment for after public input, but go ahead, Ms.?
I have no, I will just.
Is there any of our council members up there? Okay, I don't see any questions from the council members at this time. So at this point, we will move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 7421?
This is Clerk Jones. I do not see anyone expressing interest in speaking in Bill 7421.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 7421?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 7421.
Okay, thank you. Then at this time, the public hearing on Bill 7421 is now closed? Okay, council members, do you wish to make any statements regarding this bill? Councilman Warner?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I kind of, on the weekends, go out and do a coffee drive around and checked out the property. I think, Mr. Danch, it's, it's at least 15, maybe closer to 20 feet from when you stand on the parking lot there, up to the top of that, and it's a good 30 or 40 feet. It's really not usable land, but the homeowner wants to buy it and add a little bit more on to his backyard, buy it from Beacon. And I don't see that Beacon would ever be using this property. And so it's a benefit for that homeowner there, and I support the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warner. Is there any other council members wishing to make a statement? Okay, and at this point, I'll now entertain a motion regarding Bill 7421.
I move to send Bill 7421 to the full council with a favorable recommendation, subject to the subdivision of the property as requested by the zoning department and agreed to by Beacon.
Second.
Okay, it's been a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll for Bill 7421?
Yes. Councilmember Nizgatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. The Bill 7421 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the next bill. That is Bill 8321. Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 8321 a second reading?
Yes. 8321, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, to vacate the following described property. Partial street vacation, Francis Street, the east 9.25 feet of right-of-way width, running from Howard Street on the north to Corby Boulevard on the south, a distance of 403 feet plus or minus, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. There is a committee report, which I'm the chair of the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee, and that was led out of the committee with a favorable recommendation to the full council. At this time, is the petitioner present?
Yes. Mike Danch, Mike Danch from Danch Harnett Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive, South Bend, Indiana, in this case, representing the University of Notre Dame. And what we're asking council to do is to approve a partial vacation for the right-of-way for Francis Street that runs from Howard on the north to Corby on the south. What we're asking for is a 9.25-foot width of that right-of-way to be vacated. That'll be used for residential purposes. Right now, Francis Street has an extremely wide right-of-way of 82.5 feet. The existing street and the sidewalks fit well within that area. What we're asking for council to vacate will not affect the street right-of-way width or where the sidewalks are located. They will be maintained as you see them today. The point of what we're doing is, is taking that 9.25 feet and adding it to the property between the east side of Francis Street over to the Trader Joe's parking area that was recently approved and is under construction. The intent is to take the property, what we're calling Eddie Commons Phase Four, and to build 28 single-family townhomes on that site. We will actually subdivide the property and create 28 single-family houses that will be built there, assuming council approves this partial street vacation. All, any kind of infrastructure improvements will be. will be done by the developer at no cost to the city. As part of what we're doing here, there'll be new sidewalks, new curb and gutter placed on that east side of Francis Street. There'll probably be a top coat placed on Francis Street as part of our process to build the homes there. We will be tying into the city's sanitary sewer and the water lines as well. The proposal that we plan to do is also add some additional parallel parking spaces on that east side of Francis Street for the use of the residents in that area. What we would ask council to do is approve that partial street vacation. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions for the petitioner?
No.
Is there any questions up there?
I see no hands.
No, no hands. Okay. Okay, then, at this time, we're going to go to the public portion hearing. Clerk Jones, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 8321?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 8321.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 8321.
Okay, thank you. Then, at this point, the public hearing on Bill 8321 is now closed. Would council members like to make any statements regarding Bill 8321? Councilman Warner?
Just a quick one. I think, here, this Francis Street, the petitioner owns all of the property surrounding this section of Francis Street. So closing this, actually, it deadens right now, so closing this doesn't affect any neighbors or anybody across the street or on the north or south end of that street at this time. And for that, I'm voting in support of it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other council members? Nobody else up there? Councilman Hammond?
Could you clarify for me, please, Mr. Danch? Are we closing this, or is, I thought it was just portions along the sides.
That's it. The Francis Street will remain open. All we're doing is taking the east 9.25 feet of the right-of-way and vacating that. Francis Street will remain open. It will remain a public right-of-way. The width will just go from 82.5 feet down to 73 feet or 73.5 feet. That's, that's all that's happening. It will remain a public street. The street itself is not being closed. The access will continue for that. We're just taking a small portion of that to add it to the residential development, which will end up being most likely yard area.
Thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Hammond. Is there anybody else that would like to make a statement? Okay, at this time, then I will entertain a motion regarding Bill 8321.
I move for passage of Bill 8321.
Second. Okay, the bill has been motioned, and it's been properly seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Tomas Morgan? Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride? Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bill 8321 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to rise from the committee of the whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, this had moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the committee of the whole. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 74-21?
7421, Third Reading on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Amending the Zoning Ordinance for Property Located at 600 North Niles Avenue, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole regarding Bill 74-12, 21, I'm sorry?
Yes, President White. Bill 7421 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 74-21.
Move for passage?
Second.
Second. We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Bill 74-21 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please give third reading to Bill 83-21?
8321, Third Reading on An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, to Vacate the Following Described Property, Partial Street Vacation, Francis Street, the east 9.25 feet of right-of-way width, running from Howard Street on the north to Corby Boulevard on the south, a distance of 403 feet plus or minus, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the committee of the whole on Bill 83-21?
Yes, President White. Bill 8321 was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion for Bill 83-21.
Move for passage?
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to the resolution portion of our meeting. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 21-14?
2114, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, Commonly Known as 4755 Ameritech Drive, South Bend, Indiana, An Economic Revitalization Area For Purposes Of A Five-Year Real-Property Tax Abatement For Delta Management Company, LLC.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. Thank you, President White. Community Investment met this afternoon and sends Bill 2114 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presentation from Community Investment, followed by the petitioner? If so, state your name and address.
Yes, there is. If you can hear me, this is Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development with offices on the 14th floor of the City-City Building. Want to thank the petitioners for their patience tonight, and especially this afternoon, as we went through some difficulties. Tough meeting, but we value your time and your contributions to the community. We have two today. You know, we, as a city that's lost so many foundational companies in our history, it's an honor to support some of these that have been around for so long. Place Candy was a recent one and so on. Kuntz Wagner, also known as KW Customer Controls, tenant of Delta Management, who is the petitioner for the real property tax abatement question here, has also been around for decades. With any real property tax abatement, we like to, when the presentation works, there goes, give you a look at where the real property is that is in question. 475, excuse me, 55 Ameritech Drive is just north of Cleveland, really the intersection of Cleveland and the bypass 31 there in the Portage Prairie or Amerplex, or whatever your flavor is for calling that area up there. They're proposing a 30,000-square-foot expansion or addition to their existing property there, building. It's going to be about a $1.8 million investment. 70 jobs will be impacted. 50 will be retained by the addition of this and the ability for them to grow and continue their business. And 20 new jobs will be created. I'll glance over this a little bit. I'll leave this slide up so folks can read it. But, you know, Kuntz Wagner has a long history in South Bend. And in 2018, the File family, Mr. Richard File, Bill Harland, who is a leader there at the facility, and their counsel, Peter Augustino, are all online and can contribute in a moment. But they brought together a management team and invested in a restart of a company, a South Bend company that had gone bankrupt, rehired 50 South Bend folks. So that's some great recent history of the company, and then this expansion is just looking forward to even more success. I'll allow Bill to talk about their products and so on, but just to really summarize the impact of this, again, it's a nearly $2 million investment, retains those 50 jobs here in South Bend, total annual payroll of nearly $4 million, and 20 new jobs with a total annual payroll of nearly $900,000. So I'll stop there and allow the petitioners to jump in and share a little of their story and need and so on, and then come back and summarize the details of the abatement itself. And gentlemen, please remember to give your name and address before you speak. Thank you.
This is Peter J. Augustino, attorney at offices at 131 South Taylor Street in South Bend, representing the petitioners. I just want to say, as a lifelong resident of South Bend, it is good to see work and cooperation from the city and the council members to work on helping out existing businesses in the community that have been here a long time. I think that's a positive step. It's a big statement for the city of South Bend as a welcoming to other businesses that want to locate here. You're taking care of people that have been here a long time, and that's a good statement. There was a question raised earlier this afternoon by Councilwoman Hammond about how do we come up with these percentages and of the abatement and so forth. And just a quick review, the state law allows up to 10 years of abatement, and it could potentially be 100% for 10 years. So we're at a level here of less than half of that in terms of the abatement request. The amount is determined using the criteria that the council had set forth in its ordinance on abatement. And I won't go through it, but the process has been used. The project's been scored that way based on jobs, investment, infrastructure needed, wages, and so forth, and a number of other factors. And so the project's been scored using the criteria established by the council. And we think that it's a very moderate request for abatement being presented to the council tonight. And with that, I will pass the microphone over to Mr. Harland, who can speak to the details of what the company does and how this will, abatement will help the project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, council. This is Bill Harland, working out of 4755 Ameritech Drive in South Bend, the property in question. I am working closely with other stakeholders in this business, Dick File and Laura File Elliott. Laura is the manager of Delta Management Company, our, the property owner and the company's landlord. KW Custom Controls, as Peter mentioned, has nearly 100-year history and joins the File family in a sort of a 75-year history in South Bend, so very long-term residence. KW Custom Controls manufactures package control houses, package control rooms that are used in power generation, oil and gas, utilities, telecommunications, and a host of other industries. Our products are worldwide, primarily in the U.S., but we have shipped overseas as well. And our products are effectively a manufactured building that typically would range somewhere between 10 and 14 feet wide, and at the small end, 20 feet long, but at the large end, up to 60, 70 feet long. And inside these package, inside these control houses, these fabricated buildings, will be heavy-duty electrical equipment, drive controls, and a host of other equipment that's provided by our customers, the likes of Siemens, General Electric, Mitsubishi, and so forth, for integration in the building and then transportation. Again, in the utility, oil and gas, and other industry. See, to rebuild confidence of customers. It took a long time, but we have made a lot of progress in these last two and a half years to the tune of breaking even or slight profitability in 2020. And now we're in a position where our customers are ready to give us considerable new business, but we also have to demonstrate we have a place to complete that work. And that's what gives rise to the proposed 30,000-foot addition. This picture in Dan's presentation is taken from the bypass. So this is as if you're heading north on the bypass, looking to your east toward the back of our building, and the intended 30,000-square-foot addition would come out the back of this building, right where that Kuntz Wagner sign is, and give us considerable additional manufacturing space, which we need, very much need, to pursue this additional business, maintain the security of the jobs that we reinstated following the bankruptcy, and also grow. We forecast growing by at least 20 jobs over the first three years. We have benefited from a loyal and diverse pool of employees, including a number of women, five or so women, and solid representation in ethnic minorities, and are very encouraged by the prospects of adding more people once we can get this addition completed. So we very much appreciate the time the committee spent with us earlier today. We're happy to respond to their questions, and certainly any that surface here, and hopeful about our future and ability to drive this new business from these customers if we can secure the added space.
Thank you. Does that end your presentation? Is there anyone else that will be part of the presentation?
No, I have, I have Dick File and Laura File Elliott on in case there are particular questions. But no, I think that, Peter, unless you think I missed something, I think that completes our presentation.
I think we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Well, this is Dan Buckenmeyer. Again, I just wanted to add a little detail about the phase-in itself, phase-in abatement. The total benefit over the course of the five years will be $188, roughly. Again, remember, these are all estimates. We don't know where the assessor's office will land on valuing this addition to the building, but our best estimates say it will have somewhere in the neighborhood of $188,000 in benefit, and that somewhere in the neighborhood of $34,000 will be paid in the years of the five-year abatement as it phases back in. And then the entire property, the existing plus the extension, the 30,000-square-foot addition, will pay roughly $216,000 per year in property taxes. Again, this supports nearly $2 million private investment in the city, retains 50 existing jobs that are, individuals bringing nearly $4 million in payroll into the city, and then 20 new then 20 new jobs will be created in that time with a total annual payroll of over 800. That is all I have, and we, staff recommends this and sends it forward with our recommendation, and look forward to your questions and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Then I know I would like to also state, after we go to the public hearing portion, I do know that Councilman Eli Wax would like to make a statement. But are there any questions from councilmembers?
I just have a comment.
Councilmember David? Oh, you want to make a comment? Okay, I'll swing back by. Are there any questions at this time of the petitioners?
I do. Mr. File, we know that in 2018, the situation was dire. What made you decide to pull people together to go give it another shot?
I hope that I'm getting through to you. The, the basic thing is that I was with the business for over 50 years, and the people in the business became my friends, and I became their friend. And I sold my interest in '08, believing that the new owners would take care of things. But the new owner sold this operation to some people in Texas who ran off my top executives and made a bunch of stupid moves that put this thing into bankruptcy. So when I found out that all our people were out on the street suddenly, I considered those to be my friends out on the street, and I thought it would be good to work with my other two partners and see if we couldn't get their jobs back.
And now that you guys have turned it around, and if you are able to add this 30,000 square feet onto the building, how much business is that going to generate, or how much opportunity will that make, bring to you all?
Well, this situation is twofold. The first thing is that after an awful lot of effort, we've got some people who were hurt by the bankruptcy to say, okay, we'll give you guys, your new people, back a chance. And now they're saying, you know, you've got to stay up with us. We have more business for you, but we can't give it to you if you don't put on this addition. So the addition is the only way we're going to keep this going. In fact, some of them would say, if you can't keep up with us, we're not sure we're going to keep giving you the business you got now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone? Clerk Jones?
There's a...
I'm sorry.
Rachel Thomas Morgan.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
That's okay.
Thomas Morgan?
Thank you, President White. Apologies for my delay. Mr. Buckenmeyer, if you could answer, I thought this was a good question that was asked in committee. The commitment is to add 20 new jobs over the course of five years. Could you just speak to how we hold businesses accountable to that?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking. So every year, the department, per the ordinance and so on, we go through a compliance check, and it's underway right now. If I go back, work backwards, we work toward a June 15 deadline for a report that goes to council. We have about a month between needing to give you that, you councilmembers, that report and the community that report, and a May 15 deadline for companies to submit, not just to us, but also to the auditor's office and so on. There are a number of forms and compliance elements that have to be submitted, and a wide range of things that we look at beyond just job attainment and so on, but we do look at jobs and every other element that's been committed to by the company. We look at investment levels and so on, and assure that those commitments that have been made to the city are met. And we go back, not just next year, but every year of the abatement. The folks here at Delta Management, as well as every tax abatement recipient, fills out these forms, submits them to the city, and assures us that they are in compliance with all of the commitments made, so.
Thank you, Mr. Buckenmeyer.
Are there any other questions? I'll go to the privilege of the floor, I'm sorry, public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting?
There is no one waiting from the public to speak on Resolution 2114.
Anyone waiting to speak in opposition?
Yeah, a hand just went up.
Okay. Clerk Jones, would you please acknowledge that person, please?
Yes, I'm trying to wait for it to come up on, okay. You have Drew Duncan, who has his hand up. Mr. Duncan, please unmute yourself and state your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Drew Duncan. I'm located at 2103 High Street, South Bend. I'm more so speaking out of concern. So I sit as a citizen member of the Community Relations Board of the Common Council, and these abatements have been something that have been a point of conversation for the last couple of meetings. Something that concerns me out of what we're looking at, the gentleman recently mentioned that the current payroll is $3.6 million for 50 jobs, and the new jobs coming in, 20, approximately over five years, that new payroll will be $873,600. So those new jobs generated are going to average out about $43,680. So those new jobs that the city is giving money away for is going to, on average, provide those workers $29,120 less. So I think this sets a bad precedent for the city. Yes, we're taking care of people who have been longstanding members, who have invested in South Bend, but I do think that it's important that South Bend, again, ask people who do business in the city, who are asking for abatements, to, again, rise to the challenge. After a pandemic, wages have to be higher than that, and again, that's just simple math to do. So it's not enough for us just to present the public with jobs, 20, over five years, but we have to know that those jobs are going to be sustainable, and we have to know that those jobs are going to pay what the city has paid for, what they're worth. So again, if we're averaging it out, and I'm happy that we bought up, brought up Clay's Candy, you know, 5.4 million for five jobs. So again, it seems as if, you know, the board that oversees this, the Department of Community Investment, is really just handing these out with very little stipulation about longevity and what the citizens, not just the city, are going to be provided for the money that won't be paid over five years. Are you?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. And the petitioner has five minutes for rebuttal.
No rebuttal from the department if the petitioner chooses to address it. No need.
This is Peter Augustino on behalf of the petitioners. I appreciate the comment from Mr. Duncan. I think it's a valid point. I think that the validity of his point, though, does not apply to the specifics of the situation that we're dealing with. We are dealing with estimates. We hope that the payroll averages actually increase because the market values increase. We are going based on estimates. Those are good-paying jobs, and we think that in particular with respect to this abatement request, it is warranted because you are adding jobs at a good rate to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to comments from councilmembers. Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I think Mr. Duncan just stole all of my thunder. I had those same concerns. I'm going to support this particular bill because the city itself offers itself in this way, but there has to be a larger conversation that occurs sometime in the future on how this city not only offers tax abatements but manages them as well. There has been not a history established of this city, and that goes back from 2008 of me even being here since 2008, when a company comes back with this, with their hands empty and saying that, you know, we didn't make our mark, and that the city itself will call the tax abatement back in and penalize that company for not making good on the contract they made. I've never seen it. There is always some sort of like, you know, issue, some recession, there is a pandemic, there's, there's all of these phenomenal things that occurs. My dog ate my homework, that stops that from happening. So we almost look like that we're using this incentive as a rescue. It's not a rescue, it's an incentive. Businesses are able to apply for it. If they get it, they get it; they don't, they don't. But there are also contractual components within the tax abatement that says X, Y, and Z. They donate to this nonprofit, or they support this many jobs with insurance, et cetera. I just really think that, well, excuse me, I know, it's not a thought anymore. I know that we can do better with the way that we're rendering out our, and giving out our tax abatements. Again, there's nothing I can do about this right now, and there's nothing that, you know, I would say that that was bad about this particular deal, but the more I hear these tax abatements and even the challenges that come up from these tax abatements, you know, the math is simple, right? So I get it. We're investing more than what we look like we're going to get out of it. And the truth is, if we even go a little bit further in it, further with it, where do these people live that are actually working for the company? Do they live in South Bend? Do they live in San Joe County? Do they live in southwestern Michigan? I can keep going with the derivatives and showing that it probably is not really working out for South Bend. It just sounds like it is, but it really isn't. So I just really believe that this council is responsible for the questioning of this particular policy itself and how it actually is being used to support the function of the city services here. Just last year, we were talking about this financial Armageddon that was getting ready to happen or getting ready to occur, and I don't know if that's going to happen over the next couple of years, but our budget is decreasing. 2008, our budget was like something over $400 million a year. Now it's close to 300. We're losing money, and we're losing population. We're closing schools. We have to talk about this, and we have to talk about our financial future and health very soon, and I yield.
Thank you. Councilmember Eli Wax?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what I said at the committee meeting. I, or the petitioners are represented by Peter Augustino, who is part of Anderson Augustino and Keller, where I am an associate attorney. I do not represent the petitioners myself, and I have not been involved in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, any comments?
Yeah, I, as we're looking at this tax abatement and looking at how it's $188,000 benefit in the beginning, but then after the five years, they will end up paying $216,000 of post-abatement taxes. Touring the facility, seeing what they build, it's, I'm just excited that South Bend is building stuff again. Our great history of our city was manufacturing, and somehow people lost that. So to have people that are, who even when it was getting ready to go into bankruptcy, decided to give it another shot, and hopefully things will be successful, and after these five years of tax abatement, they'll begin to pay back what, what they were given to soften the blow. They showed us the big facility, the buildings that they build, and right now, they, they have, they can't, they can't maneuver because they don't have that extra space to store those buildings, and these, these are going to some major things across the country that is helping to keep America going. And so to be able to see that in South Bend, that we have a company that is doing this kind of work, I'm excited about it, and to see what they're building, and it was just a sight to see, and to know that adding 30,000 feet onto their building is going to give them the opportunity to be competitive, bring more jobs back to South Bend. We talked to some of the workers. They were very happy, and a very mixed group of people, so a very diverse labor force, and they're excited. And then they're doing things to help people learn how to weld and all that stuff, and provide opportunities for people to learn those skills. That's what's going to help make good jobs for people in the city, and so I appreciate it, being able to see all of that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Niskoski, any comments?
Thank you, President White. Just a couple of comments. I am disappointed, looking at the construction-related cost of this project was zero, from what my understanding was in committee, that there would be no local workers performing any of these jobs. So that is a disappointment for me. However, taking a company out of bankruptcy, giving 50 people back their job, and looking to try and do an expansion with the opportunity of further employment for people in our city, as we have talked about economic decline, the pandemic, you know, people meeting work, 20 jobs is 20 jobs. So I just can't scuff that off as nothing, and 50 plus 20 is 70 jobs, and over five years, getting back $216,000 is just money, it's a lot of money. However, I will, I do have to say that these tax abatements coming before us, we're going to be giving these dollars away, that we should have some local companies building these projects in this case. That's just my own opinion, that's how I feel about it, but I will be supporting this in this particular case because it's 50 jobs and it's 20 additional jobs.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lori Hammond, any comments?
Yes, thank you, President White. I think the confusion here is the difference between the fact that we are all extremely grateful to Mr. File and the rest of the group that have made the sacrifices, and the policy conversation that needs to be had as a council. This is not a conversation at all directed toward the businesses. We just have some issues with the current ordinance, and there are several of us here that would like to embark upon a much larger conversation. So I apologize if there has been any ill feelings toward the petitioners, absolutely not meant at all. This is about a procedural thing within the council. So I thank you for the jobs that you are bringing and the proposal to bring this company out of bankruptcy. We appreciate everything that you do for the city, and just, if you would just trust us, we will get our ducks in a row here.
Thank you. Councilman Toreau Warren?
Thank you, President White. So let's look at the numbers. And in 2016 and 17, they paid $63,000 in property taxes, and 18, they paid $58,000 in property taxes. In 19, the year that they went bankrupt, they paid $28,000 in bank, in property taxes. At the end of this abatement, they're going to pay $216,000 in property taxes. It's a significant return that's coming back to our community, to our city. Those are tax dollars that can go to, for, to fix streets, for additional street lighting and other things that our city needs. And then I think 20 jobs is, is very impressive and very noteworthy, and we can't ignore that at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rachel Thomas Morgan, followed by Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
President White, I have no, no further comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Yes, thank you. I do agree that we need to be more intentional. I've been saying it for my tenure on the council, and I know we talk, and it seems like it's rhetorical. I am definitely in support of the resolution, however, we do, as a council, need to be more intentional and have an administration more intentional of what we're saying about local investment as far as contractors. So those are things that we need to discuss internally as a, as a committee and as the council. So that's what I wanted to add to this as well, but I am in support of this specific job, definitely. to this as well. But I am in support of this specific job, definitely.
Councilmember Wax.
Thank you, President White. I just want to piggyback off of what councilmembers Lee and Warner said. This is how we grow the tax base. This is how we create additional revenue. This is how we create additional, better jobs, by supporting the businesses that are bringing those to our city, those that are paying the taxes in our city. That, that widens the pie, that increases the base, so that it trickles down for everybody. And that's the way that we continue to grow our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to...
Hey, question. Is this going to be, this is going to be in a Tiff district, right?
I want to make sure.
Mary, take your time.
I don't know. I need to yield to Dan Buckenmeyer.
Yes.
Is this in a Tiff dis- district?
It is in the River West Tiff district.
River West, yes. Okay. Thank you. Well, now I'll move, I would like to say that I had the opportunity of visiting the site, and the diversity and individuals that I personally knew are working there, and they are in leadership positions. And so I can contest to that part when I was able to tour the facilities. I think that there are two issues here. One is a policy issue that needs to be discussed at a different level. And to look at that, then the other one is that we do have a business that has been very committed to the city of South Bend for all of these years, and that when the business went into bankruptcy, we had one of our citizens to stand up and say, I'll make sure that not only will we continue the business, but these individuals will still have jobs. So at this point, I will be supporting this resolution, and would now like to entertain a motion from the council members.
President White, I'd like to move Bill twenty-one fourteen. I would like to make a motion to, to adopt Bill twenty-one fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution twenty-one dash sixteen?
Twenty-one sixteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as three oh one East Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six zero one, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Mossberg and Company, Inc.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
There is, President White. Community Investment Committee met this afternoon, and sends Bill twenty-one sixteen to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We'll now move to the petitioner. First, we'll have a report from Community Investment, Mr. Dan Buckenmeyer, followed by the petitioner.
Thank you, President White. Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Public Development, offices on the fourteenth floor of the City-County Building. So another, well, not quite, but very close to century-old business in South Bend. So founded in nineteen thirty by the gentleman in the picture there, Mr. Herman Mossberg, right around the corner, or right next to where they are today, but then on three oh two East Tut. Again, approaching a century of success, recognition as not just local, but nationally renowned, and very respected printing company. It's amazing to see the reach of the items they print, customers they serve, and so on, both in terms of the product and geographically during our visit, which several councilmembers and committee members were able to attend, and appreciate that, and welcome their comments. Today, Mossberg is, has two locations in South Bend. Three oh one Sample Street is a sixty-four thousand square foot production and printing facility. That is the focus, by the way, of where this new equipment that we're going to ask for council support is, is going. There are seventy-three employees at that location. And then out on forty-one hundred Technology Drive, actually, I, I think you could actually, if you could lob a five iron over the, the bypass, you might be able to go from Kuntz Wagner to Mossberg's facility there. But anyway, one hundred and two thousand square feet there, thirty-seven employees, and then warehousing along with some additional production there. So what's in question is support for a very significant investment there, nearly three million dollars in investment going to a, well, a, a new-to-Mossberg press. Now, this picture, well, I guess, I just noticed, there's actually, you can see a person on the far right of the picture, to just kind of scale that this press shown is, is one or two school buses long, and just an immense tool, an immense investment, and really just the center of, of this, this South Bend company's operation. I'm going to stop there. I'm going to allow Mr. James Hillman and Gene Crumlish from Mossberg to jump in, and talk about their petition, their need, and so on. And then, again, I'll come back and talk a little bit in detail about the abatement itself, and we'll take any questions. So, Mr. Hillman?
Good evening. First, let me just check in to make sure everyone can hear me all right.
Yep, and name and address, too, please.
Yes. So my name is James Hillman, and I'm the president and owner of Mossberg and Company, here at, located at three oh one East Sample Street in South Bend. And it was my grandfather, Herman Mossberg, that founded our company in nineteen thirty, as a printing company at that time. And today, we have four divisions, but I can tell you that that original printing division of our organization is the core, still is the core of our business. And our other three divisions really rely upon that, that core business. We were fortunate during COVID, because of our extensive work in the healthcare industry, our, our customers declared us to be an essential supplier. We provide labels and packaging for companies such as Roche Diabetes Care, Siemens Healthcare, the Kohler Corporation, and Fisher Diagnostics, just to name a few of our, our customers located throughout North America. This particular investment is important to our company on a, on a couple of different levels. It really supports the continued success and, and future of our main division, which is our printing division. It will replace two older presses. And we have determined over the last number of years, that our old press technology is not allowing us to be competitive, nor allows us to survive in the very competitive industry that we are in. And this press does. And it brings to us a lot of tremendous opportunities in terms of advanced manufacturing, the opportunity to educate our employees in advanced manufacturing technology and processes, and just allows our company to continue to provide the products and services we do, but mostly allows us to be successful moving forward. And we know that our old technology will, will just not allow us to do that. So we don't come before the council often to ask for abatements. We have invested over two million dollars in the last, since two thousand sixteen, without requesting any tax abatements. But for these significantly large purchases that, that do provide for our ongoing success as an organization, we are asking for a tax abatement, and have planned for that as part of the financial success of the organization moving forward.
Gene Crumlish, Mossberg and Company, located at three oh one East Sample Street. I, I just want to reinforce what James just says. We define success as employing people within the community. We, we take our position here on Sample Street very seriously, and we reach out to our neighbors. We want to be a good neighbor, and these jobs are very important to us. That's thus the reason for improvement in the technology and the services that we can provide, to maintain those jobs.
Thank you. Mr. Buckenmeyer?
Yes, thank you. Thank you both. So, a quick, couple details on the, the requested support for the personal property tax abatement, that will support the capital investment in this new Heidelberg press, investment of two million eight hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. It is a five-year phase in, and is all personal property phase, abatements are. They would recognize about a hundred and sixty-six thousand in benefit over the course of that five years. But as it fades, phases in, sorry, it will require them to pay about thirty-five thousand dollars throughout that five years, and then about thirty thousand a year post-abatement. But again, it supports nearly three million dollars in, in that investment, retains a hundred and ten South Bend jobs, again, being just a, if not the central component of the business, and a total annual payroll of over five million. And I think that's all I have for the moment. Welcome any questions, and thank you.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilmember Eli Wax?
Thank you. Two quick questions. Do you know what the useful life of this press would be, or what you would hope it would be?
We, we had, we had budgeted between eight and ten years?
Yes. Typically, we see about eight to ten years. The presses that it's replacing are a little bit over fifteen years at this time. So we're a little bit behind on our replacement. And again, this is a significant upstep in terms of technology and advanced manufacturing, about a ten-year lifespan for this press.
And in the event that you didn't purchase the press, or couldn't purchase the press, how would that affect your ability to maintain your current work, your workforce?
We are, we would struggle with our financial performance as an organization. We know that this division is not performing at the financial level that would allow us to continue to support investments moving forward. So we...
Let's just say it would be detrimental.
Yeah.
And, and we've also realized that our customers come to us because of one virtual roof, if you will, even though we're in two locations. So many of our customers are coming to us because we can offer different kinds of services under one place. So if we can't offer that anymore, that will have a detrimental effect on our sales.
I have a question.
Councilmember Lee?
Can you tell us about how you guys were able to sustain the hundred and ten jobs during the pandemic?
Yes. We, first of all, we, we did sustain our employment during the pandemic. We, we applied for, and were successful in obtaining PPP funding for that. And with the understanding, the reason and for PPP funding was to, to continue to employ our, our, our current workforce. And, and we did so throughout two thousand twenty. We did not have any layoffs. And we're not anticipating layoffs moving forward, if we can remain competitive. However, we did see a decline in our sales, in excess of ten percent and over fifteen percent so far this year. So because of that, we didn't have the financial results of our, that we had forecasted. But we stayed true to the commitment of the PPP loan, and retained the employees that we have. And we intend to do that moving forward.
We also, we also are firm believers in utilizing the people we have. So they were very flexible and agile. So as a couple market segments declined, namely one of them being tourism, we were able to utilize them with a surprising market segment that rose, Craft Brew. We, one of our market segments is producing shrink sleeves for beer cans. And as bars are closed, they had to contain the beer in some way. So we happily provided shrink sleeve cans in that area. So, and as James already mentioned, our pharmaceutical division is, is the overriding reason that we were deemed an essential provider. So that, that remained constant. So in answer to your question, we were just agile and tenacious of using the people we had to serve the markets and the sales that we had.
Thank you.
I see Councilwoman Rachel Thomas's hand, and then I'll see if there are any other councilmembers that you have any questions.
Thank you, President White. Could, could someone just clarify for me? I, I believe I did see this, that you, you provide your employees both healthcare, but also pension.
We, we have, we do not have a pension, but we do have a 401K, and also profit sharing plan. So when the company has profits, we share those with our employees. I'm very fortunate. We have some wonderful, long, very long-term employees. And in addition to healthcare and 401K, we have short-term, long-term disability. We reimburse our employees for educational, for them to advance their own educations. So I think we have a, a good benefits in addition to their salaries. And that's, that's an important part of a total compensation program.
It is very comprehensive.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Councilmembers, are there any other questions? Before I go to the public hearing portion, I do not see any hands. Clerk Jones, is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in support of this resolution?
There is no one from the public that is wishing to speak in support of Resolution twenty-one sixteen.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak in opposition of Resolution twenty-one sixteen.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. Before asking for a motion, councilmembers, are there any comments you would like to make at this time? See, okay. Councilmember Kenneth Lee?
I would just like to say that Mr. Hillman, Gene can sell ice cream to an Eskimo. She is amazing. Again, I'm new to the council, so getting to see all of these businesses that are, been in our city for a hundred years, to see the quality of stuff that they can create is amazing. And then to go and see their facilities, and see, see what they're doing, and how long they've been doing it. I think the most, that I was impressed was the fact that they wanted to make sure that their employees stayed employed. And in a day and time where everybody is shipping jobs everywhere else, to see a company have that kind of resolve was impressive to me. And again, they, they do a thing called Influencer, where they're fulfillment center for them. And all these different products that people come up with, the people get in, and go online, and talk about it. And it's, it's, you know, and that's a big deal on the online community. And so the fact that it's being produced here in South Bend is, is exciting for me. And, and we want to continue to see, we want to see, continue to see more of that happening. So, thank you.
Thank you as well. I'll now entertain a motion regarding Resolution twenty-one sixteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Nuskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Will you please read Resolution twenty-one dash twenty?
Twenty-one twenty, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, condemning any actions of state or federal legislators that have the intent, effect, or appearance of suppressing the right to vote of any eligible individual, American citizen, or group of American citizens.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, this came before the Community Relations Committee, and was passed forward with a favorable recommendation.
Councilwoman Lori Hammond, I believe... And Councilwoman Lori Hammond, I believe that you are the petition者的 sponsor.
I am, yes. I would like to point out, before I read the resolution, that this has been a community effort, that I have had the opportunity and the pleasure to speak with and meet with a number of individuals from different community organizations. They include La Casa de Amistad, Black Lives Matter of South Bend, Faith in Indiana, Michiana Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression, the Sunrise Movement of South Bend, and the League of Women Voters. So, my thanks go out to all of those organizations for the input and the support that they have given for this piece of legislation, resolution. I also would like to thank the three other council members that have joined as co-sponsors, Henry Davis, President Karen White, and Vice President Sharon McBride. So, if you would indulge me, I would like to read through the resolution. Says whereas, "The right to vote is a fundamental right of every American citizen and the foundation of a vibrant democracy. And whereas boundaries, excuse me, barriers to voting should be dismantled rather than constructed. And every eligible voter should be able to cast their vote and have it counted. And whereas, the ratification of the 15th Amendment in 1870 affirms that voting rights cannot be denied to citizens based on race. And whereas, despite this constitutional amendment, post-Reconstruction Jim Crow laws severely restricted minority voting rights, particularly those of African-Americans. And whereas, the Voting Rights Act of 1965 contributed to a significant increase in voter registration and participation by African-Americans and other minorities. And whereas, the Supreme Court's 2013 decision in Shelby v. Holder struck down Section 4B of the Voting Rights Act in 1965, but specifically recognized that voting discrimination still exists, and no one can doubt that. And whereas, following the Shelby County decision, at least 14 states added additional voting restrictions for the first time in a presidential election in time for the 2016 contest. And whereas, there were 22% fewer polling places nationally between the years of 2012 and 2020 elections. And whereas, it is reported that currently at least 47 states across the country have enacted or are considering new laws that restrict access to voting, including laws requiring certain forms of IDs to vote, laws restricting voter registration, and laws limiting early voting. And whereas, one state has gone so far as to criminalize provision of food and water to voters waiting in long lines to vote. And whereas, voter ID laws, restrictions on voter registration, purging of voter rolls, and more restrictions on early voting are the latest tactics used in, to suppress voting by historically disenfranchised groups, including people of color, the elderly, young voters, and people with disabilities. And whereas, these laws can impose additional costs on states at a time when state funds are needed to support education, social services, and other important priorities. And whereas, up to 11% of Americans lack government-issued IDs, and up to 7% lack official documents proving their citizenship. And whereas, of the estimated 11% of American citizens, among who lack government-issued photo identification, a disproportionate number of low-income elderly or people of color. And many, whereas many voting eligible low-income Latino voters are naturalized U.S. citizens who lack proof of citizenship and cannot afford a certification of citizenship or a replacement certificate of naturalization, which costs $1,170 and $555, respectively. And whereas, insufficient language, as language assistance at polling places could possibly threaten eligible Latino voters' turnout in future presidential elections. And whereas, proponents of voter suppression laws have failed to show that voter fraud is a problem anywhere in the country, while proven fact established the contrary that voter fraud is exceedingly rare. And whereas, a broad coalition of top government and industry officials declared the November 3, 2020 voting the most secure in American history. And whereas, the American electorate is increasingly diverse. And whereas, the American people have demonstrated a desire to participate fully in the electoral process, now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section 1, the South Bend Common Council hereby condemns any action of state or federal legislators that have the intent, effect, or appearance of suppressing the right to vote of any eligible individual, American citizen, or group of American citizens. Section 2, the South Bend Common Council instead urges state and federal legislators to make it a priority to guarantee that all eligible American citizens have both the opportunity and the access to their constitutional right to vote. Section 3, the Common Council encourages the citizens of South Bend to speak up and let their state and federal legislators know that a democracy depends on the exercise of the right to vote, not the suppression of that right to vote. And section 4, the city clerk is directed to mail a copy of this resolution to Senators Todd Young and Mike Braun, Councilwoman Jackie Walorsky, Indiana State Senate Members Ryan Mishler, David Niskoski, Linda Rogers, Indiana House of Representatives Members Dale Devon, Maureen Bauer, Jake Tezka, Ryan DeVorek, Jack Jordan, and Timothy Wesco. So, I'd like to see if there are any questions from anyone, any of the council members?
Councilwoman Hammond, are there any other individuals that will be part of your presentation at this time?
If Ms. Elizabeth Banyan is still on the call, I believe she is.
Yes, she is. Dr. Banyan, will you state your name and address, please? Nice seeing you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Banyan, 1507 Sunnymead Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here to speak on behalf of the League of Women Voters of the South Bend area. Our organization was formed in 1920, over 100 years ago, following a 72-year fight for women's suffrage, a battle that included state and national lobbying, parades, marches, arrests, beatings, hunger strikes, and imprisonment. Our key mission is to empower voters and to defend democracy. We live in a democratic republic, a representative democracy in which people are supposed to be sovereign, in which popular sovereignty is expressed primarily through the right to vote. As the resolution outlines, our history as a nation includes a battle to expand political rights to all Americans. People in this nation have bled, fought, and died to secure the right to vote and to promote the aspirational values of our political culture, liberty, democracy, and political equality. The 15th Amendment in 1870 affirmed that the right to vote cannot be denied to citizens based on race, and facilitated the political participation of African-Americans at all levels, both as voters and as political officeholders. Coalitions of Black and white Republicans passed significant civil rights legislation. But sadly, this movement toward equality did not last long. White Southern resentment of Black progress and empowerment led to the creation of violent organizations like the KKK dedicated to white supremacy. Fraud and violence, along with the creation of state-erected barriers to the franchise, marked the end of Reconstruction. Racial gerrymandering, literacy tests, and white primaries, among other tactics, prevented African-Americans from exercising their constitutional right to vote. These tactics, supported at the time by Democratic political leaders, were amazingly successful in disenfranchising eligible voters. State and federal laws matter. By the beginning of the 19th century, almost every Black voter had been disenfranchised in the South. Starting in the 1950s, the civil rights movement began to make gains through great personal risk and sacrifice, including beatings, killings, and imprisonment. Public pressure in response to the brutal treatment of peaceful protesters convinced lawmakers to pass the 1965 Voting Rights Act that was signed by President Johnson. The law was effective in closing the gap between white and black registration and turnout rates, and later in protecting Hispanic voters and language minorities, furthering the promise of equality at the ballot box. Section 5 of the Act, which required federal preclearance of new election practices proposed by state and local governments for the history of discrimination, was instrumental in achieving those successes. Section 5 blocked and deterred discriminatory election practices, such as last-minute changes to polling locations or consolidating districts, which could dilute minority voting strength. Unfortunately, the Supreme Court struck down this preclearance requirement in 2013, and new restrictive voter laws surged, a surge that we are once again witnessing in the wake of the 2020 elections. It now falls on us, as American voters, as local, state, and national political leaders, regardless of political party, to reject restrictive laws that make it harder for eligible voters to cast their ballots. Election security is important. This is one of the reasons the League supports paper backup at every single polling place. But sacrificing access to the polls and disenfranchising constitutionally eligible voters is not the way to secure our elections. Passing restrictive laws in the name of preventing voter fraud, despite the absence of evidence that such a problem exists, is unacceptable, both as a general rule and because the laws disproportionately harm those, including racial minorities and young people who fought the hardest to have their right to vote recognized. Unsupported complaints of voter fraud, complaints rejected by courts and disproven by numerous academic studies, cannot justify the passage of laws with the intent or effect of disenfranchising eligible voters. All voters deserve to be heard, all votes should be earned, and all votes should be counted. The League of Women Voters of the South Bend area strongly supports a yes vote on this resolution.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hammond, is there anyone else that's part of your presentation before I go to asking council members if they have any questions, and then going to the public hearing portion? Thank you so much. At this time, council members, do you have any questions? Seeing none, I do not see any hands up as well. I'm new to the public hearing portion. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of this resolution, Resolution 21-20? I do see a hand up.
Yes, we have Jordan Geiger. Jordan, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, Jordan Geiger, 302 South Falcon Street, South Bend, Indiana. I just want to thank Councilwoman Lori Hammond and the sponsors of this resolution. As we know, voting rights are under attack in many states across the country, but in particular Georgia right now. We witnessed the attack by the police on a, on a Black woman as she was trying to witness the governor signing that, the legislation, or the bill into law. And so, I'm happy to hear that our city is on the right side of history, that we continue to be a model city, and that, sorry, my bad. Sorry, and that we continue to be a model city for communities across the state of Indiana, but also across the nation. And, you know, it's just important that we continue to, to set trends. And even though we're not exactly facing the same threat, we know that they might come, as there are draconian bills that are backed by white ring, white wing racist groups that are moving all across the, all across the country right now. There are even some, some bills in the state legislature that are being considered that would penalize people like me for doing what we do, which is to exercise our First Amendment right to protest and to speak out against injustice. And so, it's great to, in affirming, to see that the City of South Bend and this Common Council is in support of a movement, folks like myself, who are fighting against very anti-Black legislation such as this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, I see another hand up.
Yes. We have Mr. Drew Duncan. Mr. Duncan, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is, my name is Drew Duncan, 2103 High Street, South Bend. And I would just like to thank Councilman Lori Hammond and the co-sponsors of the bill. I think this is so important, like Mr. Geiger said, that we show legislators, that we show our Republican Hill trifecta in Indiana, that there is no safe space for voter suppression in South Bend. And this is what leadership looks like to the community, when people step up, when people who are elected on our behalf step up, and, and even in just a resolution, protect what we hold so sacred, what people have died for, marched for, bled for, and, and what the late John Lewis has, has dedicated his life for. So, I'm just very grateful for, for the resolution, and I'm, I'm thankful that this is before the council tonight. I give my time.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing portion?
There is no one else expressing interest to speak on Resolution 2120 from the public?
No one wishing to speak in opposition as well?
That is correct. There is no one wishing to speak in opposition as well.
Thank you. The public hearing portion is now closed. I'll go to council members. Are there any council members who would like to make any statements at this time?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Henry Davis Jr.?
Yeah, absolutely. Urban Crystal said, "Democracy does not guarantee equality of conditions, it only guarantees equality of opportunity." Sam Bromback said, "Democracy thrives on diversity, tyranny oppresses it." Over this past election cycle for President of the United States of America, we have, we saw, we saw intentional voting that occurred in Michigan and, and Georgia. Then we turned back around and we revisit this idea of, if I lose, I'm gonna take my ball and go home. Georgia showed up and said, hey, we're gonna change our voting laws. And then this past weekend, my wife and I got the chance to watch a show, and I tell everyone to probably turn it on if they can. I think it's on Amazon Plus, it's called Them. And it shows this tragic history of what occurred with Black people in the South, and in California, in America. It's so tragic that I stopped at, I think after episode three or four, because I'm sick of watching people that look like me lose, because somebody didn't want to play fair, or because somebody didn't went out in the contest, because, for whatever reason. And I'm saying all that to say this, is that if we continue to allow people to use the system in such a way that becomes violent, and it, and it closes access off to American citizens, then we'll continue to revisit what's on that showed them, and what we've saw throughout the Civil Rights Movement, and these Jim Crow laws that seem to be still in existence. It's, it's an ugly history, it's an ugly past here in America. And I, I think that we can do better if we want to. And so, I joined in as a sponsor, a co-sponsor on this particular resolution, because I, it needs to be said, it has to be said. There's no more that I can say, but we have to do better, we must do better. And thank you, Lori, for allowing me to participate with you on this particular action.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, I do see a hand. Councilwoman Sharon McBride?
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Hammond, and all of my colleagues as sponsors and co-sponsors. It is very important that we make sure that our voices are heard, and that we do not go backwards. And we've come a long way, we have a long way to go. And throughout the nation, we have seen that, that we people of color, we're still not on an equal playing field. We still, to be, have voter suppression coming now in 2021 is very disheartening. So, we have to continue to fight for speak up and stand up to make sure that everyone has a voice, and that we do not... has a voice and that we do not revert back to the old Jim Crow laws and make sure that we're fighting for one another and that everyone has a voice. So thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this special resolution, and I'll yield my time.
Thank you. I would like to share, as one of the co-sponsors, that my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, was part of the women's suffrage movement years ago. Part of the core foundation that we have is to educate and to ensure that our citizens, that they have the right to vote and that they know the reasons why they're voting, but most importantly, we have a responsibility to ensure that that right is not taken away from them. So Delta Sigma Theta for years have, this has been one of the main core programs that we've had through social action, will continue to do so. But even if I was not part of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, I can recall when I went away to college, I went to a predominantly Black institution my first year, which was a wonderful experience for me. I had not even left the state of Indiana, so I didn't know that cotton did not grow on trees. I was just in awe, okay? I was the girl from Indiana. And I can recall when I asked for a pop, and they all bust out laughing, because they don't call it pop back in those days, they call it what? Soda. Okay, so it was a very education. But what was so important was that each Wednesday and each Fridays, they would bring in keynote speakers that not only educated us from an academic perspective, but they taught my history. And they taught that when I went back home, I had an obligation, it wasn't even an option, that you need to go back and because you are educated and because you're committed, that you had a responsibility to go back to your community to make it better. So since I returned back to South Bend many, many years ago, I've never stopped working, committed, and given my time in my life for what I believe is important. And one of the main importance that we are looking at at this time and age is our right to vote. That is our power, and that is our voice. So that's why I sign on to this resolution. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
I think it's important that we all acknowledge and recognize that access to voting is not a partisan issue. Being able to vote is a right on either side or the middle of the aisle. So when you restrict voting for one group, you restrict it for everyone. And it's a self-defeating process to try and restrict access to voting. And the other thing I want to point out, there was a voter ID law downstate that was making its way through, and it's been stalled, but I would not sit back and think that we have accomplished anything. I would be shocked if we did not see additional legislation coming through our own state legislature very soon.
Are there any council members, Councilmember Kenneth Lee?
I didn't get an opportunity to help sponsor this bill, but I do think it is very important that we understand that it is all of our constitutional right as registered voters to be able to support the candidate that we feel is the best and not have to worry about repercussions because of it. It's important for us to be able to know that your vote is your voice, and having that opportunity, whether it goes the way you want it or not, you should be able to have that opportunity without repercussions. And so, thank you, Councilwoman Hammond, for taking the lead on this, and all of the sponsors of this bill. It is so important that we make sure that people have the right to vote, their free mind, their free will. And that's what makes this great country wonderful, that's what makes America great, when we have the freedom to speak our minds or vote our conscience. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments? If not, we'd like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 21-20.
I'd like to make a motion. That 2120 is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Wax?
Nay.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, will you please give first reading to Bill 87-21?
8721, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 19, Article 1, Division 2, Section 19-13 of the South Bend Municipal Code to identify species of vegetation prohibited from sale, planting, or propagating within the city, and amending Section 19-14 to identify species of vegetation prohibited in the tree and lawn areas in the city.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 87-21 to the Parks Committee, Set for Committee, and Public Hearing Council, and third reading for April the 26, 2021. We have a motion that's been seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Is there any unfinished business at 9:20 PM at this time? Any unfinished business? Is there any new business at this time?
Counselman, oh, Tori Warner? Yeah, the Redevelopment Commission, in its last meeting, appropriated $1.4 million to the United Ways Community Center, which is gonna be on fellows and do bail, unfortunately very close to where the shooting occurred today, about two blocks from there, but, and they will be putting out bids this summer and beginning construction there. It's a great project, and we've been talking about it for a couple of years now, and not only a community service, but a daycare and services provided to folks in the neighborhood by the United Way, so, tip dollars trickling down.
And I thought too, that they've raised a lot of private funds, too.
Yeah, they're, I think total, the project is 3 million or just over 3 million, maybe 3.3, and the city is contributing 1.4.
Thank you so much.
What's the ceiling on the, what are they aiming for? How much?
Total project?
Yeah.
Is, I think, just over 3 million. They've, and they've had all their funds.
So, does the city participate only by giving, or does the city participate by commanding, we've been here before, jobs? What is our investment?
I believe, I'd have to go back and look, but I believe it was concrete work, infrastructure contributing towards the building of the project.
But we'll follow up on that.
And the neighborhood associations have been a part of that as well.
Well, understand what I'm saying, I'm not trying to be curt.
No, I'm listening.
We're paying close to half of what is being raised. Taxpayers, citizens, on property that won't be taxed. Yes or no? That's right.
Yes.
What does the city residents give, get out of their investment? I got it. Great place to put a community center. You just gotta talk about community center over in my area. But still, if we put out something, what are we getting back? That's just a question you don't have to answer, because you probably really don't know all of the answers, but I think that, you know, I put that question out there.
Okay, thank you for the question.
Do you know the number of jobs that they're anticipating?
Oh, I don't.
We'll get back with you on that. Are there any other?
I do, President White. The Rum Village Neighborhood Association will be having their meeting this Wednesday at the Nature Center. They start at 6 o'clock, and they'll, should be having a little more information about the neighborhood plan that they'll be having there. Also, Monroe Park will be hosting a mulch madness event on Saturday, and they'll also be doing a neighborhood cleanup. I only know that because I've been involved with the lead program that is Councilman Davis's district, I believe. I just wanted to put that out there.
Sounds like it's yours.
Okay, yeah, no, it's not.
Are there any other new businesses?
But I'm sure you were aware of it.
No, actually, I wasn't.
Okay. If not, I'll move to privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak on the privilege of the floor?
I do not see anyone in the chatroom waiting to speak on privilege of the floor at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, every time I say that, a hand comes up.
Do I see a hand? No, I don't see a hand.
Yeah, actually, it's Drew Duncan. And, Mr. Duncan, if you would unmute yourself and state your name and your address again for the record, please.
Okay, last time tonight, this is Drew Duncan at 2103 High Street, and I'm gonna just use the time on the privilege of the floor to address Councilwoman Tomas Morgan in the behavior that was exhibited in the committee meeting last week concerning the Police Reform Board. I, as an African-American living in South Bend, it is so discouraging, it is absolutely deplorable that someone who is elected to be on the board and represent us would get on that board and did less diligence in protecting that bill that would help African-Americans escape police violence or at least provide a blanket of accountability. And for the work that you did on that, you've done less to give out money in the city. So I just want to make it very clear, I don't, you're at large, you will never receive a vote from a person like me. I find it incredibly disgusting that you would, you would attack that bill and say that we were going to be sued constitutionally, and the bill is not even being enforced yet. So I yield my time, that's all.
There's another speaker, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I can't see the hands.
Yep, Jordan Geiger.
Hey, thank you. Jordan Geiger, 302 South Falcon Street, South Bend, Indiana. I wasn't prepared to say anything, but after hearing what Drew said, I want to echo his sentiments, because there was a, there was a bill, a substitute bill, that was recently proposed and sponsored by Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan, and it was a bill to repeal and replace the current M&amp;WBE ordinance. I want to thank Councilwoman Sharon McBride for making the motion to table the bill indefinitely, because it was certainly a bill that, in my opinion, was put forward in poor taste. I don't know if you are, or if any of you have read through the bill, but it removes a lot of the provisions from the recently passed, as recently as 2019, or strengthened in M&amp;WBE ordinance. Provisions such as calling for or requiring pre-bid conferences, a provision that calls for the adoption of procedures to make sure that contractors receive prompt payments, provisions that require the city and the Diversity and Inclusion Office to report in its, or to include in its annual procurement report data on the number and percentage and the dollar amounts that, or contract awards that have been, that were given to Black-owned businesses, Latino-owned businesses. In a recent conversation that we had with Councilwoman Tomas Morgan about that, actually at noon last, noon of last Wednesday, so just, what, six hours before, that substitute bill was up for consideration, we talked with her and begged and pleaded her, and Joe Chabaz was on there. If any of you were a part of those discussions from 2019, you know how instrumental he was in strengthening that ordinance. Councilman Henry Davis Jr. was also on, was also there. He's one of the co-sponsors of the 2011 bill where the ordinance had been strengthened. And so we met with her to almost hold a teaching, so she could understand why people have, who have been laboring around this issue for a number of years. I remember four, five years ago, we had met with James Mueller, when he was then the Chief of Staff, to talk about how we needed a racial wealth divide report or study, and also a disparity study. At that time, he was against the racial wealth divide report or study, and he was also against the disparity study. He said that the disparity study was too expensive and not really needed. And so for her to try to remove...
Under this part, you have three minutes to speak, and I don't know who's been keeping time.
Has it been three minutes?
Under privilege of the floor, it's three minutes, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Bob, or is it five?
It's correct.
Yes, three minutes.
Has it been three minutes already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't know. Well, I'm just, I think she needs to be repealed and replaced from that board, because she put forward an ordinance that specifically goes against and undermines the Black community.
Thank you. Are there any other council, I mean clerk, do you see under?
That exhausts our list, privilege on the floor.
This meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you, President White.